Okay, it is November 5th, 2024. The time is 3:15 PM. This is the City Council's study session. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Beal.
Here.
Mayor Protembiasi.
Here.
Counselor Youssef.
Here.
And Counselor Bosmans.
Do you have mine? We know? No? Okay. Excellent. So the first item on the agenda today is reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Can I have the reading of the Indigenous land acknowledgement first? "This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu Ute, Hicaria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene-Navajo Nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation." Okay, first item, we have stormwater presentation. Just making sure. We have the Stormwater Presentation, Public Works Department.
Yes, Mayor. We have our interim Public Works Director, Bob Lowery, here to do a presentation on stormwater updates. One of the things I will just wanted to announce, just to kind of, as we set this conversation up, if you recall, it may have been a couple of years ago, we did have a strategic plan or a retreat with the council where we talked about a lot of different items to fund. Facilities, 2005, 2015, transportation, stormwater was one also that was identified as needing a sustainable funding source. We had not come up with anything since then, but Bob has come on board and has a process that he'd like to outlay for the city councils to learn about and go from there. So with no further ado, Bob Lowery, our interim Public Works Director.
Thank you, Jose. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Lowery, the interim Public Works Director. I'm here this afternoon to provide you with an update on the city's stormwater program and to seek some direction moving forward. I'm going to provide you with a quick overview of the existing stormwater program, discuss some shortfalls, and suggest an option to address those shortfalls. The Clean Water Act of 1972, augmented by the Colorado Water Quality Control Act, established permit requirements for municipal separate storm sewer systems, commonly known as an MS-IV permit. This program was established by EPA's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, referred to as NPDES, and the Colorado Discharge Permit System, CPDS, and is an unfunded federal mandate that imposes significant costs on local government to meet regulatory requirements. The MS-IV permit program controls water pollution by regulating point sources that discharge stormwater and any pollutants carried in the stormwater into the waters of the US, such as the Anamis River. Durango is required to have an MS-IV permit because it has a system that collects stormwater and discharges it into the waters of the US. In an MS-IV permit and stormwater management program, there are six required program elements, often referred to as best management practices, or BMPs. These include public involvement and participation, public education and outreach, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site management, post-construction site management, and municipal operations or good housekeeping, such as street cleaning programs and household hazardous waste collection programs. What are we trying to accomplish with our stormwater management program? First and foremost, we must ensure we are in compliance with national and state stormwater regulations designed to protect water quality. We must keep people and structures safe from flooding, and we do this by managing the 100-year design storm above ground, utilizing good site design such as swales, detention ponds, sediment basins, and proper site grading. We require the 10-year design storm to be captured through stormwater inlets and the underground piping system to be discharged into the rivers. We also utilize low-impact design and upstream development to protect the existing downstream development. The city is responsible for maintaining the public infrastructure, such as stormwater inlets, culverts, bridges, and the stormwater collection system beneath the streets. We are not responsible for managing private stormwater infrastructure, such as swales or inlets on private property. The four main elements of an effective stormwater management program include the creation and implementation of a stormwater master plan, which includes a storm drainage design criteria manual, a watershed hydrology model, and identified capital improvement projects. For the stormwater system, a robust stormwater management plan with dedicated staff to ensure preventive maintenance is being performed, such as cleaning and televising the stormwater collection system and regularly maintaining the storm inlets and structures. Established emergency management plans and procedures in response to large storm events that may inundate or overtop storm structures, causing flooding and creating debris and sediment flows into the streets and highways, and finally, a water quality monitoring program to ensure the effectiveness of the stormwater system control measures and ensure compliance with the MS-IV permit. An effective stormwater management program includes condition assessments of the existing infrastructure to determine the shape it is in, as well as historical data on flooding, erosion, and sedimentation. The capital improvement project program needs or vast and requires significant funding. To help us develop the stormwater CIP, we have put together a prioritization matrix, which creates a framework for identifying and organizing capital improvement projects, and how and where to focus our CIP funding. The factors that are considered in this matrix are first, public safety, to ensure our community is safe from storm events such as flooding, meeting and exceeding regulatory compliance, and continuing to be environmental stewards of our watershed; the potential for damage to private property, and the financial impacts associated with the projects. What are the impacts of not completing the projects versus the cost of the project and the beneficial outcomes of those projects? This is the desired state for where we need to get to. Next, I'll discuss our current state and the challenges we are facing to having a robust stormwater management program. The city of Durango Stormwater Collection System consists of more than 250 lane miles of city streets and alleyways, as well as the county and state highways, natural drainage channels, almost 2,400 storm drainage inlets located in the curb and gutter on the sides of the streets or in swales or low spots, nearly 55 miles of underground pipes, and numerous channel swales, detention ponds, and sedimentation basins located throughout the city, all of which we have to maintain. Here is a map of our urban watershed basins. All the water that enters these basins, much of which comes from outside the city, flow over impervious areas such as parking lots, streets, sidewalks, and buildings, and dump into the Anamis River without treatment, meaning any pollution picked up along the way also enters the Anamis River. The areas highlighted in color represent those portions of the larger basins inside the city. The larger basins are delineated by the dark black lines. Now I'd like to show you some pictures of storm events that have caused damage and resulted in significant time and money being spent on cleanup. The picture on the left is at Horse Gulch, and the picture on the right is along Wilson-Gulch Road, just before the Subaru dealership. These are pictures of Florida Road near Malfunction Junction in Hawx Nest after a storm. These shows showing emergency repairs in Russe. The pipe under the road failed, and dirt on top of the pipe leaked through the hole, creating a large cavity between the top of the pipe and the street, which was an immediate safety concern, fearing that the street might collapse. The picture on the right shows the replacement pipe going in, and of course, this required a complete road closure. These pictures in the High Llama-Wilson-Gulch Drive area were taken after the heavy rains in September of this year. The entire street division spent more than three days cleaning up this mess. Excuse me. These pictures show the extent of flooding in the vicinity of El Paso and Russe. Here is a picture of a ditch. It was supposed to be a video, but I couldn't get it to work, captured in 2027 when the Crestview ditch, here we go. Here we go. When the Crestview ditch overtopped and sent debris down to El Paso and Russe, and also flooded the skate park. The next two slides. Are before and after slides of improvements made to that natural channel. This is the Crestview ditch before the improvements were made, and this is the same ditch after improvements were completed. The next few pictures are pictures that we took with our television camera on the inside of some of our storm pipes. You can see debris at the bottom of this pipe, and a failed pipe. and a failed pipe section right in here that I'm highlighting in the red. Here's another picture where you see the pipe has been crushed and is filled with debris. We're not able to get a camera in here to see the extent of damage beyond this point. And here you see a cable probably from directional boring for fiber optics that has been bored straight through our concrete storm pipe. This is not an uncommon occurrence, and we haven't located all of these, but those penetrations create a dam and cause backup and flooding. Here's another picture of a pipe that has been torn and crushed, allowing sediment into the piping system, potentially creating a cavity above the pipe. Now, we have not been able to televise our entire storm sewer system, but these are just some examples of kinds of things that we're finding when we do that. As I mentioned earlier, the city has a comprehensive stormwater master plan, and our design criteria manual was adopted in two thousand and eighteen. These criteria provide detailed information, concepts, and engineering methods for management of stormwater in Durango. It also details consistent drainage criteria for development projects in the city's capital projects. The basin hydrology model included in our stormwater master plan includes the ten watersheds I showed you previously. Except for a dedicated street sweeping staff of two operators in our street division, we have no staff positions dedicated to stormwater maintenance. Our current stormwater management maintenance program is totally reactionary, meaning maintenance is performed on our stormwater infrastructure after a storm event has already occurred. We desperately need dedicated staff to ensure a proper preventive maintenance program is developed and implemented to ensure our system is performing optimally to meet our MS four permit requirements and minimize flooding and erosion. Currently, all stormwater expenditures come from the general fund. In the last ten years, we have spent two point eight million dollars for stormwater projects, of which one point three million was a grant. And in the last three years, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, or about forty-five thousand dollars a year, was spent on stormwater maintenance, not including street sweeping. Our current estimated capital project needs exceed fifty million dollars. And we have forty-four million dollars worth of stormwater infrastructure that we're going to have to replace over the next fifty years because of age. At an annual replacement rate of two percent per year, that equates to about a million dollars in annual infrastructure replacement, as well as over two and a half million dollars annually in maintenance costs. And of course, this is in addition to the identified capital project needs. And I'm not going to dump a problem in your lap without suggesting a solution. Based on staff's review and analysis of the stormwater management program, we have concluded we need more dollars and more people to effectively execute the program. A dedicated funding source also has the potential to free up significant general fund dollars that could be used somewhere else, as currently all stormwater expenditures come from the general fund. Staff recommends that the public works director, in conjunction with the city manager and the city engagement specialist, create a citizen's stormwater focus group to study the need for dedicated stormwater funding. In staff's experience and research, there are several options for establishing dedicated funding, but the most fair, equitable, and most commonly used in the United States, including more than seventy Colorado municipalities, is a stormwater fee, which is based on the individual property's contribution of stormwater to the system. The larger the parking lot, the more water goes into the system, simply put. If council concurs with this recommendation, staff will prepare a resolution to be presented at the second council meeting in November, directing staff to proceed with a formation of a focus group. Staff also suggests that the focus group consists of representatives from local schools, businesses, churches, developers, the Chamber of Commerce, Anamis River stakeholders, or environmental organizations, as well as three to five at-large representatives. This list represents stakeholder groups that would be most impacted if a stormwater fee were to be implemented. If council concurs with this recommendation, staff will conduct a series of meetings with the focus group to show them our current program, our needed program, and associated costs, and report back to city council and the financial advisory board at the conclusion of the focus group's work. I am done with my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, I've got some experts here who can.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Do you have questions?
Yes, I do. I was really curious about the damage to the stormwater pipes by drilling through and creating places where the stormwater can leak out and also the blockage. Is there any way to backcharge the companies who made those coals in the pipes?
Only if we knew who did it.
Okay.
Some of these have been done over many years, and I we could certainly attempt to find out who did it, but that's the only way we could attempt to recover any cost.
All right. Do we have any specifications where there's a certain area under the ground where we have like from four feet to eight feet? That's where stormwater pipes are? Then everybody else has to drill somewhere else? Do we have any kind of specifications like that, or they're just allowed to drill wherever they want to drill?
They're supposed to locate utilities, and they're supposed to clear them before they do drill. That doesn't always happen, and sometimes the locators aren't very good in finding their locations. We run into this sort of problem on every construction project we do, and sometimes we find utilities only when the shovel goes in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a few questions. So would this, you know, stormwater fee be just for new builds? Or are we talking also for rehabilitation of existing properties?
This would apply to every parcel of land in the city, unless some concessions were made, some exemptions were made. And that's one of the reasons the stormwater fee is considered to be best, because everybody who contributes pays.
Okay. This would be through a water bill?
It would go on the water bill.
Water bill. Okay. Thank you. And then will there be a difference potentially between commercial versus residential rates?
Generally, residential properties are charged the same. We use GIS, and we calculate what the average impervious area of a residential property is. Typically, they run between twenty-three hundred, twenty-seven hundred square feet. It varies community to community, but we would determine what the equivalent residential impervious area was. And then we would take non-residential properties, say the Home Depot parking lot. And if the residential, equivalent residential size was twenty-five hundred square feet, and the Home Depot parking lot was twenty-five thousand square feet, then we divide the residential size into the commercial size, would factor a ten, and then they would pay ten times the residential fee. That's simplification, but that's how it generally works.
Okay. Last question. I mean, I'm like I said, well, I'm forty-six, and I've always seen that corrugated galvanized pipe being used. Are there new best practices for materials to be used nowadays versus?
Yes, sir. And corrugated metal piping is the least favorite solution. It's sometimes used for emergencies. We prefer reinforced concrete pipe for all our stormwater, simply because it's the most durable, lasts the longest, and is easy to maintain. In some instances, we use the heavy black plastic pipe, HDPE. But metal pipe is our least favorite for the reasons that you pointed out.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
So from what I'm seeing here, it looks like there's three point five million dollars annually needed, not including the fifty million dollars in capital projects. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is typical municipalities collecting that much? Or what is, I mean, I know our rate will depend on?
Fees in Colorado range from two dollars a month for a resident to thirty-nine dollars a month for residents. The average in both the mean and the median is somewhere around eleven dollars in the state of Colorado, just to give you an example of what we're talking about. And generally, they continue to go up. Four years ago, the median in Colorado was eight dollars.
And you feel comfortable that we could get enough money from fees to cover the needs that we're looking for?
I doubt if we'd ever get enough money to cover everything we need, but certainly we could make a big dent in our needs, depending on what, if you chose to go this route and what the rate was set at.
Yep. And then another question. And it left me. Just flew right away. All right. So thank you for your presentation. Any other questions, Molsa? All right. Thank you very much.
Hello. Can I ask a question? I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Oh, we can. Yep, we hear you. Counselor Bosman is on. Sorry, we didn't know you were on.
Yeah, I just missed the roll call there. I had a small question for you. You mentioned on your presentation on that page where it shows the design criteria manual basin hydrology, hydrology model, maintenance program, and program funding. If you want to, can you show that one more time, that sheet? Yeah. You mentioned under program funding that you have a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in maintenance costs over the last three years, which was forty-five thousand dollars a year. And then the next line item, you show that you have two point five million annual maintenance costs. That's a big difference. So I was just curious, can you explain what that means?
Yes, sir, I can. The forty-five thousand average a year was spent just on reacting to flooding and debris removal with no preventive maintenance whatsoever, no cleaning of inlets systematically, no televising stormwater pipes to determine the condition they were in, which is absolutely necessary in order for us to figure out what additional work may need to be done.
Okay. And so what is included in the two point five, and how does that break down?
That's a lot. Two point five includes additional staffing, including a street sweeping operation, which would be moved from the general fund to the stormwater fund. It includes televising the system. It includes cleaning all the inlets and the pipes where we find blockages. And that's just, it's not a hard number. It's an estimate based upon what we know now. About half of that would be in staffing.
Half of it is in staff. Oh, well. So what number of employees would that cover if half of it is one point two five million?
I didn't understand. He was asking how many staff. We're looking at probably, we have two engineers currently on the staff, and they would be included. We have two street sweeper operators on the staff. We're looking at a crew of probably four additional staff plus a supervisor. There would be just operators to do the day-to-day preventive maintenance.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for clarifying.
I remembered a question. How many, do you know how many municipalities in Colorado do have this fee? And how many don't? Are we one of the few that don't?
We have surveyed, and we know more than seventy do.
Oh, beautiful.
We did an internet search basically and got the cities and the rates. Some we couldn't find, but that's the number we have is a minimum of seventy.
Great. Thank you.
I do have one question. So for this focus group, what would be their timeline to make a recommendation for the funding?
We would hope that we could do it in six months. I think if the focus group were formed, we would kind of ask them for what their availability was. We could meet every two weeks. We could meet once a month, probably for a couple of hours. I think we could accomplish it in six sessions.
Okay. And then they would come to council for recommendations, just staff?
They would come, they would staff would come back and present to council what the focus group recommended.
As well as the financial advisory board.
And the FAB board as well. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have organizational stewardship, the two thousand twenty-five budget reconciliation. Devin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer for the city. The purpose of this item is for council to review the reconciliation changes since we met on October fourteenth for the proposed budget. So this is items that may have changed when the departments submit their budgets to finance. They do that in June for capital and in August for operating. So in between August and October, as council is aware, that is becoming the city manager's budget. And so this is the opportunity to make any changes that may have occurred since it was presented to council in October. So so first off, this amendment aligns with our mission of providing outstanding services for the entire community by allocating resources to different services and projects. It further aligns with our vision of what we want to be, contributing to a thriving and responsible community. And our values of teamwork, service, innovation, and respect are all at the forefront of creating this budget. So the presentation outline, I'll just take you quickly through the different goal areas where we do have some reconciling items in each one of those. And then we'll present the combined fund summary, as well as the next steps where we're at in the budget process. So here is our strategic plan goal areas. And so, as I mentioned, we'll take you through each one of those strategic plan operational budget areas. So first off, we have organizational stewardship. Within organizational stewardship, this includes departments such as the city manager, city attorney, finance, customer service, information technology, any community support, funding, buildings, performance excellence, general services, the vehicle, equipment, and service fleet, sustainability programs, and non-departmental. So the way that we're showing these reconciling items is first by goal area, and then by division, by what the reconciling item is, what the proposed budget was, the adjustment, and how that reconciles. So for that first item there, we are looking at a reduction in our professional services budget. We've evaluated the actual expenses for the year and found that we could reduce some overall spending in this category based on actual usage and needs. The Performance Excellence Division does shift two employees from finance over to Performance Excellence. So this is really a crucial role in driving that continuous improvement efforts for all facets of city operations. In addition, this is looking at having the tourism engagement professional at twenty percent. This position does help with fostering meaningful engagement with our tourism efforts. And this is an existing position currently with Visit Durango that would be shifting over. Other areas within this for our risk transfer, we mentioned at the budget retreat that we are still working on shopping, our workers' compensation, the property casualty insurance. So what this is looking at is for us to remain with the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency, or SERSA, for insurance coverage. We will continue to work with that partnership and monitor the different coverages, risks associated that they manage for us, and continue to report back to council of any changes with that relationship that we might have. This is one area where we had some funding that was initially allocated in the two thousand twenty-four budget that we did not need to include for two thousand twenty-five. So that allows us to just redirect some of those resources towards other higher priority areas. We have another reduction based on actuals. So as we're, you know, continuing to refine the budget, this was an opportunity for us to reduce that down and again, reallocate those fundings. And then finally, under EV program and expansion for sustainability, we do have an expansion of EV of the program, and this expansion is in line with those long-term sustainability goals and need for EV infrastructure. So looking at the staffing for organizational stewardship, that first column, we're showing what was amended in two thousand twenty-four. So that's showing the shift of the two. that first column, we're showing what was amended in 2024. So that's showing the shift of the two full-time employees for performance excellence from finance to the city manager's office, as well as the assistant city manager position add for 2025 in organizational stewardship. This does include an addition of the assistant city attorney. IT with the shift of the emergency telephone funded position from the IT department over to 911 communications. And then as we're looking at reconciliation, so those first two councils already seen, but for reconciliation, this does include the 20% allocation of the tourism engagement inclusion coordinator position as well as the tourism sustainability specialist position. So moving on over to innovative housing and economic development goal area for any changes. The departments we have within here is innovative housing, development services, economic opportunity, Durango renewal partnership, and lodgers tax. So we do have some personnel adjustments. One of those is they related to the prosperity officer position. In order to make sure that those resources are aligning with the city priorities and the focus specifically on the initiatives that are supporting long-term economic growth and prosperity in our community. This role will continue to drive efforts that encourage local economic development, business retention, and sustainable growth. So this reallocation will ensure the prosperity officer can focus more specifically on these high-impact areas while still achieving the broader city goals. And other personnel adjustments, we do have the building official and administrative analyst. So specifically, this is just a reallocation of those personnel between the divisions. In community development director, this is taking that position where previously was allocated towards economic opportunity. This is moving at 100% to development services, which will help centralize and strengthen that leadership in the development services department, ensuring streamlined oversight of zoning, growth, land use, and the permitting processes. We do have a request for reappropriation for unspent funds in 2024. Since those funds are not fully utilized in certain areas, we did ask that those be redirected towards priority programs. And then as far as the other personnel adjustments, I have talked a bit about those as previously mentioned, either in this slide or in the prior. So again, we have our 2024 amended with housing innovation, tourism and marketing. In 2025, we do have a building official FTE addition. And then for reconciliation items, we do have the prosperity officer, the housing innovation, and tourism and marketing, which is just diverting those allocations a little bit differently. In safety and quality of life, we have parks and recreation, police, 911 communications, library services, and fire administration. So within here, some of those reconciling items that we are presenting is the transfer from the 911 community, or transfer to the 911 communications fund, excuse me. This is where we had previously split out 911 into its own fund. The Durango Police Department contributes to that fund as a user of the 911 capabilities. And so that is just reflecting that increase. And then next, we are looking to allocate the emergency telephone service authority funding for the continued operations of our emergency telephone services. And so some of those areas that this funding will be used for is system upgrades. So looking to enhance the efficiency and speed of emergency response, training programs for dispatchers and call center personnel to keep them informed, and then ongoing infrastructure maintenance to ensure that those public safety systems that are so critical remain operational without any disruptions. And then finally, in the library, with the joint sales tax adjustment that council saw with the joint meeting, this is looking at increasing that funding up to that full joint sales tax amount. So part of that is snow removal for snow removal operations at the library, public facility improvements, as well as a pilot program that will be included in the library. So just looking at those staffings, you can see from 2024, we did not have any 2025 proposed, does include a program manager position for recreation center, as well as the 911 communications, which includes the IT, 911 swap for the ETSA funded position, and the quality assurance training position for 911. And then reconciling items, we do not have any on there. In reliable infrastructure and community connectivity, these departments include airport, transportation, and public works. So what we are reflecting here is the change for a solid waste operator. This full-time position will help us improve just efficiencies with the solid waste collection program. We are also suggesting a reclassification for the admin manager reclassification. This will align with the responsibilities that this position will perform. We also, as I had discussed prior, with the risk management, we do have some insurance adjustments on there for our budgetary considerations, making those transfers from our enterprise funds over to the risk management fund for property casualty and workers comp. This also includes collections and distributions manager position shift, which is allowing an updated scope of work with a greater emphasis and oversight of management of water distribution systems. This reclassification will ensure that the manager is able to handle the increasing complexity of our utility operations. And then I believe it was the last council meeting or the one prior where we had requested the need for four meter repair technicians. And so this is for the ability to repair and replace the meters in the most efficient and effective way. So this is reflecting those 2024 amendments as well as what we're showing in 2025. And then the reconciling items does include that solid waste manager for trash and recycle. A few capital projects. So the first one that we are requesting has to do with Phase 1A, which is the expansion of the airport from the 2020 terminal area plan. This is a request of $350,000 to be added as part of reconciliation to the capital budget. The next one that we have is the North College Drive reconstruction. So the 2024 request was approved at the 2.8 million related to road and drainage improvements for the projects. The 2024 construction focused largely on water and sewer improvements, which were paid for in their respective enterprise funds. But much of the road and drainage improvements have yet to be completed. And so this is looking to increase that funding over into 2025. In the water fund, this is for the Wildcat Tank Improvements Phase 2 Design. So the project is looking at having, it was originally proposed as a construction project, however, it's been amended to design only in 2025. So that is a reduction in the water fund. In engage and inform community, the departments that we have are the city clerks, municipal court, city manager's office for public information and community engagement, and the Durango Welcome Center. The requests here include the public information office for pegged capital funds, as well as the welcome center being funded out of lodgers tax. And there are no requested changes for reconciling items as it relates to staffing. And then finally, for strategic workforce development, this includes human resources, risk management, self-insurance, and I will show the full summary here. But this is a request as part of the adjustment for reconciliation of $10,000 to risk management for the property casualty insurance. So looking at all of the funds and all of the staffing, the reconciling items does include everything that I have already previously discussed, but this is looking at those requests on a summary level. And then finally, as we get into our combined fund summaries, I won't go through everything on here, but just some highlight reels. The general fund projection, we are showing revenues at about 54 million, almost 55 million. Expenses of 56.2 million. This does have a net impact on the fund of 1.25 million, but the ending fund balance we are projecting for 2025 is still 14 million, which is holding at the 25% fund balance requirement. The airport projects a positive net revenue of 1 million and as a result, and a fund balance of 15.9 million. And some of the funds that do reflect some large spending, such as the water fund with a net revenue of 10.11 million. And that's related to the completion of capital projects, and I'll show that slide next. So positive ending fund balances across all funds stands. There's still sufficient reserves across the board to include these reconciling items that are included and requested. Looking at the capital funds, again, the airport construction fund has significant expenditures with an expense of 33.2 million. In the 2015, 2005 parks, open space, and trails, we are reflecting large project expenditures as a result of being either shovel-ready projects or design. The 2019 sales tax fund does have fewer projects in the state, which is why there is a larger fund balance in the 2019 fund. It's important to note on the 2015, the 2005 parks, open space, and trails, as well as all the capital projects that these do include a 10% contingency per construction. The combined funds category provides a holistic view of the capital and the operating funds for our enterprise department, so airport, sewer, trash, and recycle, and water. And you can see with those combined summaries that those fund balances are positive. And finally, we do have the fund summaries and the presentation and the online budget book for anyone to view. These changes are reflected currently as we, you know, kind of shifted to more of a live environment. So the ability to see those reconciling changes are available. And then where we're at in the timeline, so we are at reconciliation, which is today. We will hold a public hearing later this evening with the introduction of the two ordinances for operating in capital. And November 19th would be the first reading of the budget. And then December 3rd would be the final consideration for the budget as well as the mill levy certification.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. Questions?
Yes. Could I get some clarification? Okay, so on the fund balances in the beginning, okay, those are allocated funds that are just being transferred. The only new funds are the net revenue funds.
So the beginning fund balance is where we're projecting to end 2024 at. And then as we're going through, we're projecting the revenues for '24, the expenditures for 2024, or I'm sorry, revenues for '25, expenditures for '25, and then the net revenues is taking that beginning fund balance plus the revenues less expenditures.
Alrighty. And so basically, the fund balance being transferred to the next year, they're all allocated for projects completed.
So anywhere where we might have a beginning fund balance? Yes. So those beginning fund balances would carry over into the new year essentially. And that's where we're showing how we are projecting to end 2025 with those ending fund balances based on what's included in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Olivier, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it. So we will have adjournment and see you back here at 5:30.
Okay, good. Oh, but that's only four.
Oh, it's only four o'clock right now?
Yeah. It's something, then you, then you.
I was like, oh my gosh, we went way long.
I was kidding.
I know. It's like, oh my God. Just, yeah, gotta add that. We also have to have in our ending fund balance, we have to have a certain percentage that the FAB has to determine in every department to have.
Reserve. Reserve, yeah. Yeah, I'll just send that probably.
I know.
Because I didn't want to get all those questions.